...rate is higher for folks with hypertension, diabetes, cardiovascular disease, chronic respiratory disease, and cancer relative to folks without any of these conditions. And of course, a lot of the elderly typically have one or more of these conditions, so it's not surprising that they go hand in hand. Now, although the COVID-19 pandemic is still ongoing, the good news is that in China and also in South Korea, the number of new cases per day has dropped off, largely due to the aggressive public health measures like quarantining, aggressive testing, and ensuring hospitals have the right equipment and staffing. Based on the current data, over 80% of the patients with COVID-19 have a mild infection, and some people don't develop any symptoms at all. For others, they can develop symptoms that can range from pretty mild, like fever, cough, and shortness of breath, all the way to serious problems like pneumonia. Severe lung damage can cause acute respiratory distress syndrome, or ARDS, which occurs when the lung inflammation is so severe that fluid builds up around and within the lungs. The severe infection can cause septic shock, which happens when the blood pressure falls dramatically and the body's organs are starved for oxygen. ARDS and shock are the main cause of death for people with the infection. And again, this is most likely to occur in those over the age of 60, smokers, and people with other medical conditions like heart disease. In addition to causing disease, coronaviruses can spread quickly. Usually, the virus spreads when people cough or sneeze, and tiny droplets containing the virus are released. These droplets can land on another person's mouth, nose, or eyes, and that allows the virus to enter a new person. When a person with COVID-19 travels to a non-affected area, this is called an imported case. If they start spreading the disease to household contacts and those around them, it's called local transmission, since it's usually isolated to a small area and can be easily traced back to the original person. However, when people begin to contract the disease without a clear source, it's called community transmission. To prevent or contain community transmission, some schools and businesses have shut down, and some conferences, sporting events, and other large gatherings have been postponed or canceled. Once a person is infected, symptoms develop about five days later. This is called the incubation period. Now, there's debate about how much asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic people, which is to say folks that are in the incubation period, are spreading the disease, and it may be much more than what we originally thought. Viruses are given a reproductive number, or R0, based on how quickly they spread. And person-to-person transmission has been confirmed both in and outside of China. An R0 of 1 means that an infected person passes it on to one new person. An R0 of 2 means that one person spreads it to two new people, and so forth. If the R0 is below 1, the infection peters out. If it's at 1, it stays steady. And if it's above 1, then it continues to spread. The current estimate for COVID-19 is an R0 of 2.2. As a point of comparison, the R0 of the flu virus is about 1.3, so COVID-19 spreads quite a bit more easily. To confirm the diagnosis, a reverse transcription polymerase chain reaction, or RT-PCR test, can be done, which can detect very small amounts of viral RNA. It's worth mentioning, however, that early in the disease, the RT-PCR can often miss the infection altogether, meaning that it's not very sensitive. So if severe pulmonary disease is suspected, a chest CT should also be done to help detect the presence of viral pneumonia. It's also important to look for other causes of similar symptoms by doing things, for example, like a quick flu test or a respiratory viral panel to look for alternative causes of the symptoms. Treatment is focused on supportive care, such as providing fluids, oxygen, and ventilatory support for really ill people. There's also early data showing that remdesivir, an antiviral drug previously used against Ebola, can be helpful, and it's being tested by doing large-scale clinical trials in the U.S. and China. Unfortunately, there's no vaccine currently available to protect against COVID-19. Having said that, there are some being researched, including one that is in clinical trials and will likely be ready by 2021. There's also early data showing that remdesivir, an antiviral drug previously used against Ebola, should wear a mask, and they should self-quarantine within their home. If those symptoms worsen, they should call their clinic or use telemedicine to talk to a clinician. For people with symptoms that live with others or even with pets, they should self-quarantine in a separate room and use a separate bathroom if possible. And they should avoid sharing household items like bedding or eating utensils. In fact, there has been a confirmed case of human-to-dog transmission, where COVID-19 went from a person to their pet dog. However, the dog didn't get sick, and there's no evidence that pets can spread this disease or become sick. So it's not necessary to take measures against companion animals. Finally, anyone with symptoms, including children and younger adults, should not attend school, work, or any other in-person gathering, and should avoid travel. Now, for individuals that don't have symptoms but are at higher risk, like those over age 60 and people with a chronic disease, the recommendation is that they also self-quarantine to avoid the chance of getting sick. Self-quarantining requires keeping a few weeks' supply of your medications, groceries, and household items, as well as having an emergency contact person. Coronaviruses don't usually spread over long distances in the air, but they can get flung from one person to another on tiny droplets of saliva when someone's coughing or sneezing. In addition, some strains of coronavirus can survive on surfaces for over a day. With that in mind, if you're a healthy person living in a non-outbreak area, the recommendation is to avoid travel to disease outbreak areas, generally stay away from crowded places, and stay at least six feet or two meters away from anyone with symptoms. Wearing a surgical mask is not recommended because they're meant to catch droplets from a cough or sneeze going out rather than preventing you from breathing in the virus. Similarly, wearing an N95 mask is not recommended because they're only meant to be worn by healthcare workers. In addition, cleaning and sterilizing frequently touched surfaces like toilet seats, door handles, phones, and keyboards is also a good idea. As always, careful hand washing is key, and it should be done with soap or alcohol-based hand sanitizers and scrubbing for 20 seconds. Also, avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth. This is the area known as your T-zone. It's a common entry point for viruses into the body. For healthcare workers who are around people with COVID-19, the recommendation is to apply droplet and contact precautions. That includes wearing personal protective equipment like a clean, dry surgical mask, gloves, long-sleeved gowns, and eye protections like goggles or a face shield. When performing a procedure that generates aerosol, like tracheal intubation, bronchoscopy, CPR, or non-invasive ventilation, it's important to wear an N95 respirator. This prevents 95% of the small particles, like respiratory droplets, from passing through. All right, it's a quick recap. The SARS-CoV-2 virus causes COVID-19. The virus travels in respiratory droplets and enters the body via the mouth, nose, or eyes. It can cause symptoms like fever, cough, and shortness of breath, and in some people, it can progress to more dangerous complications like pneumonia, ARDS, and shock. The highest risk is among the elderly and those with other serious health conditions. Treatments are focused on supportive care, but medications like remdesivir are in clinical trials, and there's a vaccine in clinical trials as well that will likely be ready by 2021. In the meantime, the best strategy is prevention. This includes careful hand washing, avoiding traveling to disease outbreak areas and crowded places when possible, avoiding touching your T-zone,
Hello, I'm Torrance Mayor Pat Fury. On behalf of my colleagues on the City Council and all of our hard-working city staff, I want to assure you that we are working diligently to monitor the coronavirus and updates from the CDC with the importance of your health and wellness as our top priority. We are working with county, state, and national agencies to monitor this global pandemic. We are also working closely with our local hospitals and area schools. I want to assure you that Torrance's tap water is safe. It's tested daily and meets all federal standards and remains a viable resource for our community. And there is no need for panic buying. We are advised that there is no shortage of food or paper supplies. Grocery stores and pharmacies are restocking as fast as they can. And while there have been disruptions to some city services, we are focused on your health and safety. And we want to thank our first responders and medical professionals for continuing to do their best in keeping our communities safe, especially during these uncertain times. On Friday, March 13th, the city declared a local state of emergency. As disappointed as we all are, the city has taken these extra precautions by canceling city programs, meetings, and events, temporarily closing all facilities like libraries and senior centers, as well as all public counters. It is critical that we all do our part to help reduce the transmission of COVID-19. We ask you that you do your part as well by avoiding crowds and practicing social distancing. We ask that you take action consistent with California Governor Gavin Newsom's direction that those 65 and older self-isolate. And if you or someone you know close to you exhibits symptoms, you should isolate at home to help contain the spread of this virus. And remember to please practice good hygiene. Staff is assessing the situation daily and continuing to monitor COVID-19 and its effect on the public and provide regular updates through the city websites and social media. Today, we held a special meeting of the Torrance City Council where we concurred with the city manager's declaration of a state of public health emergency. And we support his decision to order all restaurants to temporarily close for public dining and only allow takeout and delivery options. Bowl alleys, gyms, movie theaters, and bars will be mandated to temporarily close until further notice. But we are working with all of our businesses to provide options for continued operation to lessen the adverse impacts. We need to take these steps to protect our residents, businesses, and the city. We ask that you all stay informed and sign up for Torrance Alerts as we send out notifications daily at 4:00 P.M. Go to torrentsca.gov/alerts. Follow us on social media, Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook, and go to our temporary website, cityoftorrentsca.com. We recognize that these significant precautions and steps are necessary to help prevent the spread of this virus. While these are difficult times, we will do what we do best and overcome. We are confident that we will get through this together. In Torrance, we always do. Please take care of yourself. Stay safe and healthy.
Washing your hands is one of the most effective ways to protect yourself from getting sick, but you have to do it regularly and correctly. Use soap and water. Wet your hands with clean, running water. Warm or cold, either one is fine. You can use bar soap or liquid soap. It does not have to be antibacterial. Just plain soap and water will do the trick. If you don't have soap and water, use alcohol-based hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol. These kill most types of germs, but may not kill certain bacteria and viruses that cause diarrhea. So always wash your hands before eating and after using the bathroom. Scrub your hands for at least 20 seconds. That's about the length of time it takes you to sing the ABC song once or the Happy Birthday song twice. Scrub the front of your hands, the back of your hands, in between your fingers, and under your fingernails. Rinse well under clean, running water and dry with a clean towel, or you can air dry. You should be washing your hands about seven to 10 times a day, especially during these key activities: before preparing meals, before eating, after using the restroom, after coughing, sneezing, or blowing your nose. Routine hand washing is one of the easiest ways to keep you healthy and singing all year round.
Okay, it's coronavirus, it's social distancing, it's e-learning, e-working, it's spending more time at home with our family. Ah, you know, there's a reality to this, and a lot of us are either already experiencing cabin fever or are soon to be experiencing cabin fever. And so what does psychology tell us about some things that we can do around that? One, draw up a family contract. Sit down together, even with your teenagers, and draw up a family contract. What do we think are going to be the major challenges that we are going to face? What are the roles that we expect people to play or would hope that people would play over the next few weeks during this difficult time? What are the strengths that each family member brings? What are the strengths that you have as a parent? Are you very organized? Are you very patient? Do you have the strength of forgiveness? What are the things that you can bring into the family contract? And let's just set a goal. I think it's really beneficial to stick to routine as much as possible. And I know that our routines are really, really disrupted right now, but stick to the routine as much as you can. Routines give us a sense of safety. They give us a sense of predictability. They help with the anxiety of your children, and they also just help you as mom or dad to get things done. And then the third thing that I would say is create zones in your home. So if you are working from home a lot more at the moment because of social distancing or because of family lockdown or e-learning, then create a workstation. This is where you're going to do your schoolwork during the day. And this is where I will do my work during the day. This is where we're going to play, have our games, our jigsaw puzzles. This is the electronics area of the house. So this is where we get on our devices. This is a little chill-out zone in the house. So creating zones in your house. You'll be surprised at how that's such a small and easy thing to do, but what it's going to do is reduce that feeling of cabin fever because we have different areas of the house where we go to for different functions. We're not all underneath our feet, and we're not all feeling bored just sitting on the couch all day watching Netflix. No, we're doing different things in different areas of the house. So there are three things that I would suggest would help with cabin fever: the family contract, keeping to your routine, and creating zones in the family home.
Hi, everyone. I'm Torrance Mayor Pat Fury. As you can see, I'm doing my part in social distancing. I'm actually recording this from my home, and that's because I want to stay engaged with all of you in our community. But I also want to be safe and protect myself and others. I encourage you to do the same. I want you to know the city is working diligently to protect its residents and business community, even if it means making some very tough decisions. City staff is working around the clock swiftly adapting to the ever-changing health crisis. And you can find all that information on the city's special website, cityoftorrentsca.com. I really have to thank our city staff, first responders, and local medical professionals for all they have done and continue to do to protect the health of all of us. I want to assure you that with their help, we are doing everything we can to reduce the threat of the coronavirus health emergency. You can find all the information you need to know regarding local impacts, whether you're a resident, business owner, or employee in Torrance. Stay informed and check out the information available online. Go to cityoftorrentsca.com. Stay safe, be well, and know that we will get through this together. Please take care.
Hello, I'm Councilman George Chen. I am at home practicing social distancing. Social distancing is as hard as it sounds. I miss seeing all of you at the city events, shaking your guilty central needs, and the other folks around you. Please leave a distance of at least six feet and wash your hands frequently. While I may be healthy, I do not want to jeopardize or compromise the health of the very young and the elderly, nor do I want to compromise the health of those who have weakened immune systems. Thank goodness to technology, we can still stay connected from a distance with FaceTime, Skype, or Zoom. Now, take care of yourself and your loved ones. Remember, it is safer at home, and I will see you soon.
Hi, I'm Councilman Jeffery Zohm. I want to thank our first responders, our medical community, and all those who have had an essential job during this health crisis who show up every day putting their lives at risk for our safety. The Torrance Transit system is also one of those essential resources for our community. Torrance Transit helps get tens of thousands of people to their jobs, to their families, to the doctor's offices, to the grocery stores, and get them almost anywhere they need to go. Staff has had to make some tough decisions recently, but in an effort to reduce the transmission of COVID-19, Transit has temporarily modified the schedule to mirror Saturday's bus schedule every day of the week, at least for now. And to further safeguard our riders and drivers, we've implemented new safety protocols. I assure you, we are taking extra precautions to ensure the safety of our riders by cleaning more frequently and following county health department guidelines. We ask that our riders respect others by abiding by safe social distancing, even when taking public transportation. I invite you to check out their website, transit.torrentsca.gov, or their bus app. Please stay safe during these uncertain times. Know that we're doing everything we can to support our Torrance community. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aurelio Matusci. I'm one of your council members here in the city of Torrance. During this health crisis, we want to make sure that all of our residents and business owners are up to date on information. The coronavirus is a worldwide pandemic, and of course, here in Torrance, we're trying to do everything possible to keep everybody safe and calm. For alerts, we have a very good system called Torrance Alerts. You can go to torrentsca.gov/torrentsalts. You can sign up with your phone number or email, and you can also choose what types of notifications you wish to get. So I encourage everybody to do that, and please stay calm. And we're going to get through this. God bless you guys.
Hi, everyone. This is Councilman Mike Griffiths. I hope you're all doing well during these challenging times. I want to take a moment to thank our city manager, our city staff, and my colleagues on the city council for everything they're doing to help manage us through these challenging days. This is a temporary situation, and with your help and cooperation, we'll all get through this together. I wanted to make sure you're aware that all non-essential businesses are now required to be closed. That goes from our flower shops, gyms, movie theaters, all the way to the Delamo Fashion Center now unfortunately are all closed. But there are still many businesses in our community that are open to serve your needs, including our grocery stores, our healthcare industry, and our restaurants. We all still need to eat, and our restaurants are still there for us. Although we cannot dine in, they're available for takeout and delivery. Please continue to support our local businesses, especially our local restaurants. Our Economic Development Department is open to help all of our businesses. Please reach out to our Economic Development Office if you have any questions or need any information or possible information on assistance from our state and federal government. We have a special website set up for information related to this COVID-19 situation and all the changes that we're making here in the city. Please visit that website. It's at cityoftorrentsca.com. That's a different website than our normal city website. It's special set up just for information related to this situation, so you can find all the information in one location. There's also a special email address that's been set up for our businesses. If they have questions and they want to email our Economic Development Department, that email address is business@torrentsca@gmail.com. Please use that website and that email address for any latest information about how we're managing through this situation together. And we want to make sure as best possible we can continue to support our small businesses. Please take a moment and enjoy the services of our restaurants. Call them up, dine with them today. I know I've been taking advantage of many of the specials that our restaurants have been offering throughout this process. We encourage you to do so. We want to make sure our small businesses are still here when this is all over. I thank you for all your support and your patience, and I look forward to seeing you all soon. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Tim Goodrich, council member in the city of Torrance. During a time like this, I'm truly thankful to live in a city where basic resources like our water supply are safe and reliable. In case there were any concerns you had, I want to assure you, your tap water is safe from the coronavirus. Daily tests are done, and safeguards are taken to protect our water quality from viruses, including COVID-19. We meet or exceed all state and federal guidelines, so there's no need for plastic water bottles. So let's be kind to our environment. Let's refill our reusable water bottles, and let's cheer to a safer, healthier, and more stable future. As we practice social distancing, I'm happy we can at least connect this way. I look forward to seeing you soon.
Hello, I'm Councilman Milton Herring. I know these times are very stressful and filled with anxiety. And many of you have questions about whether or not they will be essentials to make it through the week: toilet paper, water, things like that. But I want to assure you that there's no need for panic buying. Our supply chain is strong. Grocery shelves are being restocked daily, and we will have what we need in times like these. But what we need people to do is not be fearful. Come together. Be kind to one another. Be patient. Tough times don't last. Tough people do. And we are tough, and we are resilient. We will bounce back, and we will come out of this stronger than ever before. I'm praying for our nation, for our city, and for you. Together, we will be stronger. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Chen. During this coronavirus health crisis, we want to ensure you get the latest updates impacting the Torrance community. We hope you'll join us daily as COVID-19 Today brings you the most up-to-date information to keep you and your family safe, healthy, and informed. COVID-19 Today is live at 4:00 PM during the weekdays, and we'll kick off the weekends together beginning Fridays at 2:00 PM. City staff are working around the clock to ensure the safety of our community, for our businesses, and for our residents. You'll get updates on each 24-hour operational period, which includes new developments impacting our city. Join us here on Torrance City Cable. Welcome home.
Hi, everyone. I'm Torrance Mayor Pat Fury. I hope you're all safe and well. I want you to know that I've never been prouder of being your mayor. Your cooperation and understanding during this unprecedented pandemic has been nothing less than fantastic. And we're all grateful for the hard work of our first responders and the medical professionals in our community, putting their health on the line for all of us. It is amazing how technology is able to bring us together like this. My colleagues and I participated in what was a first for us. We were able to conduct city business by having a live city council meeting with video virtually, and City Cable was able to broadcast a meeting for us. This allowed us to have a public meeting while practicing social distancing. It just shows you, no matter the circumstance, if there is a will, there is a way. As I shared during the meeting, I along with my colleagues applaud our city staff for quickly identifying our needs and finding solutions. They are truly the glue that keeps the city together and moving ahead. I want you to know, we're all doing everything we can to reduce the threat of spreading the coronavirus. I want to thank our local businesses for doing their part by temporarily modifying how they operate, even if it meant for some shutting down temporarily. I think everyone understands now, this is truly the best way to protect you, your loved ones, and your neighbors. You can find just about everything you need to know about the COVID-19 pandemic, and you can see our council agendas along with all city news at cityoftorranceca.com. Torrance cares, and we will get through these tough times together. We always do. Stay safe and healthy. I'm sure I'll see you soon. In the meantime, please take care. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Councilman George Chen. As the news of the coronavirus global pandemic continues to unfold, here in Torrance, we are continuing to take precautions to not only protect our staff, but to protect our community and its residents. In an effort to stop the spread of the virus, we've had to make some tough decisions recently. The Madrona Marsh and Nature Center and all city playgrounds, exercise equipment, and courts at all parts across the town are temporarily closed. And I repeat, temporarily closed. We've also canceled all spring classes and events at the Torrance Cultural Arts Center. We post signage to help keep community informed. If you pay for a class, you will get a refund, or you can apply it to a future class. As I mentioned before, practicing social distancing is harder than it seems. This means resisting the urge to go to playgrounds or to the beach or places others might gather. We hope we open many of our facilities soon. But in the meantime, take care of yourself and those around you, and remember, you're safer at home, and Torrance cares. I hope to see you all soon.
Hey, Torrance, Councilman Mike Griffiths here. Wanted to share some great news with you. Our Torrance Certified Farmers Market has been reopened. The market on Tuesdays and Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Wilson Park has now been reopened with some new guidelines. The farmers booths are now spaced further apart to provide for better social distancing, and we have a controlled entry so that we don't have too many people in the market at any one time to ensure a safe environment for everyone. This is no different than what's being done at most of our large grocery stores in town, where we limit the entry to the stores. But the benefit of our farmers market is you get the benefit of all the wonderful produce that our farmers bring to us every week, fruits and vegetables that you've come to expect. Let's support our farmers. Let's come out and enjoy our farmers market. Enjoy the beautiful day like today. Get out, get some fresh air, support our farmers at the farmers market. Our staff from the farmers have worked hard to bring it back for you. Look forward to seeing you there soon, and thank you all for your patience through this challenging time. See you soon. Bye-bye.
Hi, I'm Councilmember Tim Goodrich. We've had to make some difficult decisions recently, impacting our local economy, our business community, and our residents in an effort to practice social distancing. As you have undoubtedly heard, restaurants have had to stop dine-in service, some shutting down temporarily, while others are offering takeout or drive-through options only. I'm truly thankful to all the businesses making modifications in order to still serve our community. It's comforting to know I can still go to some of my favorite restaurants to pick up meals, all the while supporting our local economy. Our downtown tourist restaurants, along with hundreds of establishments across our city, are doing a fantastic job keeping up with takeout orders, offering discounts, and some even offering free delivery to show that Torrance cares. I encourage you to dine locally, take the night off from cooking, and order takeout and enjoy some great local food.
Hello, I'm Councilman Aurelio Matici. As news continues to develop around the coronavirus public health crisis, it's astonishing to see how fast the information is changing, globally, nationally, regionally, and even here locally. We are updated daily, sometimes even hourly, by city staff. In an effort to communicate all of the latest updates and changes happening in our city to all of you at home, I'm excited to share that Torrance City Cable is launching a new program called COVID-19 Today. It's a daily live broadcast with familiar faces from Torrance City Cable. Viewers will get the updates from each 24-hour operational period, including new developments impacting our city. I encourage you to tune in daily at 4:00 PM during the weekdays, at 2:00 PM during the weekends. Stay safe, stay informed, and I'll see you all soon.
Hi, I'm Councilman Jefferys. As a former member of the Torrance Police Department, I'm truly proud of our first responders, our police and fire departments, our doctors and nurses, and all those who are on the front lines every day. I applaud each and every one of you. During the COVID-19 pandemic, our first responders have modified some of their procedures when responding to an emergency, protecting not only our personnel, but the community as well. To practice social distancing, some of our police units will only have one officer to a vehicle. Although you may see more units arrive on the scene, there will most likely be the regular number of officers. We want you to know that more police cars do not reflect the significance of the call. They are doing everything they can to do their job safely, to protect themselves as well as the community they are serving. Thank you for your continued support. They truly are heroes among us. Please stay safe during these uncertain times. Know that because Torrance cares, we are doing everything we can to support our Torrance community, to ensure everyone's safety. Thank you.
By now, you've probably heard of COVID-19, or coronavirus disease discovered in 2019, which is responsible for a global pandemic. COVID-19 is caused by SARS-CoV-2, or Severely Acute Respiratory Syndrome Coronavirus 2, because it's genetically similar to the SARS coronavirus, which was responsible for the SARS outbreak in 2002. Now, coronaviruses that circulate among humans are typically benign, and they cause about a quarter of all common cold illnesses. In COVID-19, what happened is that there was a coronavirus circulating among bats, which are a natural animal reservoir, and it mutated just enough to start infecting an intermediate host, the pangolin, an animal that looks like a cross between an anteater and an armadillo. In late 2019, the coronavirus mutated again and started causing disease in humans. The outbreak began in China, but has since spread around the world. As of March 9th, 2020, or roughly three months into the outbreak, there have been 109,578 confirmed cases of COVID-19, and 3,809 deaths, resulting in a fatality rate of 3.5%. But that represents an average across different countries and timeframes. Based on a large study in China, digging deeper reveals that the fatality rate in China was actually 16% for cases between January 1st and January 10th. But then, it fell steadily over time, until it was only 0.8% for patients with symptom onset after February 1st. There are two main reasons for this. First, the hospitals and clinics were initially overwhelmed and couldn't manage the disease, so both patients and healthcare providers were getting severely ill and dying. But within a few weeks, with better equipment, testing, and processes in place, the healthcare system responded and brought down the fatality rate dramatically. Now, as a point of comparison, the flu typically causes a fatality rate of 0.1%. So even based on this data, COVID-19 is still eight to 35 times more deadly than the flu. It's also worth pointing out that for COVID-19, the mortality rates differ by group. So for example, if you split things out by age, you can see from this table that fatality rate is relatively low if you're below 60, with no deaths seen in children nine and younger. But then it starts to really climb up for the elderly, so they're really the ones at highest risk. Similarly, the fatality rate is higher for folks with hypertension, diabetes, cardiovascular disease, chronic respiratory disease, and cancer, relative to folks without any of these conditions. And of course, a lot of the elderly typically have one or more of these conditions, so it's not surprising that they go hand in hand. Now, although the COVID-19 pandemic is still ongoing, the good news is that in China, and also in South Korea, the number of new cases per day has dropped off, largely due to the aggressive public health measures like quarantining, aggressive testing, and ensuring hospitals have the right equipment and staffing. Based on the current data, over 80% of the patients with COVID-19 have a mild infection, and some people don't develop any symptoms at all. For others, they can develop symptoms that can range from pretty mild, like fever, cough, and shortness of breath, all the way to serious problems like pneumonia.
Welcome to CenturyLink conferencing. Please enter your passcode followed by the pound or hash key, and I'll connect you. Please hold while I confirm your passcode. Thank you for joining Global Meet. When you hear the tone, you will be the 13th person to join the meeting.
Fine, but I'll hide my video. Okay. Can we activate the rest of the videos? For council?
I think they're all on or on. They need to be promoted to panelists.
They are all panelists. They're just, their videos have to be activated in the bottom. Start video on their screens.
Okay. I'm not enough.
Thanks. Okay, now we have Councilman Herring. We have video.
Aram, as the host, I think you can go through on the panelists and request them to start their videos.
Hi, this is Jill in the call center. Extension 2870, that's Rebecca. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, I'm doing that now, Katie.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Hi, it's Jill again. Extension 5762 is cable? Correct?
Who's calling 5762?
5762, that's the City Cable office?
Jill, this is Katie. I believe that that is the case, yes.
Thank you. Extension 5817 is who, please?
Patrick.
Thank you. 310-678-0442, who is that?
Chief Serna.
Thank you. Now I have a 781-5762. Is that also city cable, or is that someone else?
Jill, this is Katie. Let me look it up on 10.
Okay, yeah, there was a 618-5762. I know that's city cable, but this is 781-5762.
I believe that is city cable. I can't confirm, but I believe that is. I'll send Michael a text.
Okay, I'll put it. I'll leave it for now. Who is that, please? 310-961-0554, who's phone is that, please?
Jill, this is Katie. I don't have that number in my, in my phone. I'm not sure who that belongs to.
Okay, and then I have 424-404... I'm sorry, 424-404-3880.
It's, it's me. I'm using my cellphone with the earpiece. That made, I think the sound's better that way.
Thank you, Councilman Chan.
Katie, can you run the Facebook feed from your...
I don't have the option.
Great, bye.
And then I have someone dialed in from 5880 that's not identified. Is there someone else on the city manager's office that's dialed in besides, is that Leroy?
Maybe, maybe Leroy. Councilman Griffin, someone else. May Viet? I have call center, Patrick, Rebecca, Chief Serna, John Jones, Leroy Jackson, Viet, on the attendee side.
Okay. Um, Leroy, are you on the line?
Yes. 7509.
Okay.
6509, I guess, yes.
You make sure I have the 5880 if it's on the main line.
Yeah. All right, and I'm still trying to figure out All right, now I have two from 5880.
That's CM's office.
Councilman Herring, mic check one, mic check two.
Loud and clear, Councilor.
Great.
And no echo.
Councilman Rizzo, can you please give us a test?
Can you hear me now? Testing one, two.
Thank you. Councilman Griffith, can you give us a test, please?
Yes, I just, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, thank you. Are you dialed in from, uh, an office line, or your cell?
My cellphone. Cellphone.
Is it 5522?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gus, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
We hear you. What's the pass, what's the password?
Password for what?
The, uh, um... The Zoom meeting?
Just copy and paste the link. He should put you in.
I ca, I, I can't.
For Zoom?
We didn't get a password today, Eric.
No, you just...
Would you not?
I sent you a link. Eric, I sent you an email.
Can you send it to my Gmail account?
Sure.
Yeah, 'cause I can't pull it up. I don't have... I don't have Tor and CA on my iPad. I can't get it yet.
What's your Gmail account, Eric? Sorry.
E-E, eric@Gmail.com.
Eric E...
Aram, this is Katie. I'll take care of it. I'll forward it to him. I already sent one to Chief Berg that way.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate it.
Eric, is your phone, uh, ending 7041?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Gus, can you hear me? Okay, Michael.
Councilman Matucci, can you give me a test, please?
Testing mic, one, two, one, two. Testing mic.
Thank you.
Who's Susan Gonzalez?
She's the recording secretary. Last time, the video didn't work for her. She needs to get the feed.
Video feed?
No, she doesn't need the video feed. Just, uh, uh, I think just the, um, audio.
Has she called in?
I'll call her. Hold on. I'll call her and tell her not to.
Thank you. She has to call in, thanks.
Eric, can you tell me what number you've dialed in from?
Yeah, 961-0554.
Thank you. All right, I have in the Global Meet list, Aram, call center, Chief Serna, two city cable members, Leroy, Viet, are you in the meeting?
Viet is present, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Chan, Councilman Matucci, Councilman Herring, Councilman Rizzo, Councilman Griffith, Mayor Fury, Eric Sow, and Katie Watt. Is Councilman Goodrich on the phone? I also have Patrick and Rebecca.
Councilman Goodrich walked away. Jill, can you do a sound check for Leroy and Viet slowly? Because you'll, you'll see through that line when they speak.
Yeah, Leroy, can you give me a test if you're on the line, please?
I'm on the line.
Okay.
So, Viet, Leroy.
Yep.
Viet, can you please give...
I have very much to report tonight, but I'm happy to be on call. Thank you.
Thank you, Viet.
Okay, thank you. This, this app's pretty cool. It lets you, uh, when somebody speaks, it highlights their name.
Yeah, I figured that out. I'm renaming those. Thank you.
I'll show it to council.
Aram, can you, uh, sound check on Rebecca again? She's got sound going a little muffled down in the control room.
Okay, Rebecca, sound check.
Hi, this is Rebecca, checking in.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
So, this is what, this is what we see on the control center, count, mayor and council. This is what Jill is referring to. When I'm speaking, you'll see an orange. Testing, testing. My name lights up. And then when the public calls, they'll be, uh, we're, we're going to go ahead and label them, uh, by the item number, and that's how we control the three minutes.
Aram, do you mind making Gus and Ed panelist?
Gus is a panelist. Give me a second. Gus is a panelist.
Okay, I just got off the line with Michael. He said they were having some trouble logging in. Do you have anyone else on your, on your attendee list or participant list that still needs to be upgraded?
No, I only have call center, uh, Patrick, Rebecca, Eric, Chief Serna, John Jones, Leroy, and Viet. Those are my attendees.
Thank you.
Michael?
Aram?
Yes, sir.
I understand somebody is looking for a, uh, sound check from me.
Go ahead.
I understand somebody is looking for a sound check from me. Yes, Jill was. Michael, Jill?
Yes, Councilman Goodrich, can you just, um, increase your volume on your, on your phone, unless you're planning on leaning into it, just as you just did? And can we get a sound check from you now?
Let me see if I can bring this close. And this is the problem last time, too, is just... I was having to, like, lean off screen in order for this thing to pick me up.
Is Kevin around? Can we get a longer extension cord?
The phone is right next to his, um...
Yeah, right next.
Computer, Aram.
Am I still quiet?
A little bit. I just have to project a little bit.
Okay. Well, I guess this is as good as it's given.
Who's 2102, 1102?
He just left.
Yeah. Are we going to close? Are we going to lock the call once the meeting starts?
For Global Meet, Aram?
Yes.
We haven't shared the phone number outside of staff.
Okay. John Jones? Yeah, 1102 called again.
No, I printed on...
That was me, John Jones?
Okay. I'll update the name.
Thank you. Yes, John Jones, sorry. I got knocked off. What happened, John? I, I, I went to hit mute and I hit cancel. Okay, so, so is operator, operator error. Yeah, operator error. My bad. Thank you. We just, just want to make sure the system is reliable. Oh, yeah, no, it is. But the operator isn't. I'm going on mute.
Is it in preference to lock the Global Meet phone number until the mayor's... Ask people to start calling in? Or do we want to...
No, that's up to Katie.
I believe is going to call in. Also, if you guys, uh, need to ask people in from the public and build a queue, then we might want the time to do that if people start calling in on the earlier side. Um, but we can manage everyone who's in the Global Meet, so, so I can, I can, or the call center can automatically mute people if needed. Um, but I don't know that we should lock it just in case staff is trying to get in. Thank you.
Let's keep on answering, so, go ahead.
Can I check who is 310-938-3762?
That's Susan.
I'm sorry, who is it?
It's Susan Gonzalez.
Rec, recording secretary.
Ah, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
And we ask council to keep your mics, uh, on mute un, until you're speaking. This will make sure to keep the audio quality uninterrupted, please. Thank you. Gus, can you hear me?
Who just called in from 2550?
Dom, that's Danny.
Thanks, Danny.
Sure.
Sure.
Ten, nine, eight, seven, six... Two, one. Torrance City Council meeting is ready to graduate.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to the Torrance City Council meeting of April seventh, twenty twenty. Tonight, the city council and I will conduct the third extraordinary web-based telemeeting with our community tonight. We look forward to a time when our meetings will return to normal back at City Hall inside the council chambers, when the council and the citizens can meet and discuss the issues affecting our community face to face. For the time being, we ask you to be patient during these unprecedented times in our history. Our city staff and our city cable team have explored many options to ensure we can carry on the business of our city while allowing the residents and community members to participate in the process. The council and I have also tested and trained in advance to make these meetings as functional as possible. We ask you to help us by your participation. Thank you to those who have submitted emails by this afternoon's deadline of four o'clock P M. They have been forwarded to the council as supplemental material and will be entered into the public record. Because of the challenges faced in this council format, we will dedicate time for general orals at the end of the meeting by telephone call-in. You can participate regarding specific items by calling into the public input hotline. The telephone number is three ten six one eight two four zero four, and will be displayed on the screen throughout the meeting. Be patient when calling in, please state the agenda item number that you are calling about. The three-minute rule applies, and you will be disconnected at the end of three minutes. The council and I want to let you know how proud we are of the response of our community. You have, from the very beginning, taken health advisory guidelines seriously. You have adjusted to the world of homeschooling and staying at home. You have stepped forward to volunteer and help those in need. You have been patient as the city tries to provide services under these challenging conditions. Thank you, and now to the legal disclosures. Tonight, the Torrance City Council is conducting our council meeting under a national, state, and city state of emergency. Our council meeting will be conducted in a video telephonic conference. The council members will interact through a conference interface. This procedure is in conformance with the Governor of California's executive order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty, which suspended provisions of the Brown Act relating to meetings by teleconference or other electronic meetings. The executive order requires that members of the public are allowed to observe and address the meeting telephonically or otherwise electronically. Again, during the live broadcast, the public may participate via telephone by calling three one oh six one eight two four oh four. To the clerk, city clerk! Have any and all emails received before four P M. on this date been processed as attachments and transmitted to the members of city council?
Yes, Your Honor, they have.
Okay, we're going to start the meeting, I ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Chen?
Present.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Here.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Here.
Councilmember Herring?
Here.
Councilmember Matucci?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzo?
Here.
Mayor Fury?
Here.
We always begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance and a nonsecretary invocation. In this time of emergency, we believe it is even more important to remember our nation and flag. Tonight, the flag salute will be led by councilmember Matucci and an invocation by councilmember Rizzo.
Everyone, if you please join me in saluting our flag, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we turn to our source of strength, let us be mindful of all those who serve in our military, our first responders, our doctors and nurses, all those who are on the front lines in this pandemic, and pray that no harm comes to them. Let us also pray for those who are currently ill with the virus and those that have lost their lives to it. We pray that as leaders of our community, we have the insight and courage to serve the citizens of Torrance with wisdom and truth. We ask for guidance in making decisions that impact our community, ensuring that they are in the best interest of our city and its citizens. Amen. Thank you. I'll take a report of the city clerk on the posting of the agenda.
Your Honor, this agenda was posted on Friday, April third.
Thank you, I'll take a motion to waive further reading of resolutions and amendments after number and title. So, move, I move to waive further readings. That was councilmember Griffiths.
Councilman Chen, second.
Griffiths.
Councilman Chen, second.
Councilmember Chen?
Correct, I second.
Yes, this is for the vote.
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Yes.
Councilmember Herring?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, I'd like to say unanimously.
Thank you, I'm sorry I didn't wait for you. Uh, next item is announcement of withdrawn deferred under supplemental items.
Yes, Your Honor, this is Louis Jackson, we're on the withdrawn or deferred items for the supplemental thing which relates to the oral part of the, uh, agenda before the emails received before the given time.
Thank you. Council, committee meetings and announcements, councilmember Goodrich.
Yes, Mayor, today the Citizen Development and Enrichment Committee had a teleconference at three P M. to consider a conception design for the city's twenty twenty-one vote entry into the Pasadena tournament of roses parade. Councilmembers Griffiths and Matucci have participated in the call, so, in the call along with staff. The committee recommendation will be presented as...
Council and... Thank you. I'd like to adjourn tonight's council meeting in memory of Torrance resident, husband of former councilwoman Hope Witkowski, and friend of the city, Mike Witkowski. Mike lost his battle to pancreatic cancer on March thirtieth, twenty twenty, he was eighty years old. Mike was born in Los Angeles, California, on January fourteenth, nineteen forty, to parents Rebecca and Urban. Working hard was instilling in Mike and his brother Ron at an early age. Mike first started working at a doughnut shop run by his mother, then a gas station operated by a close family friend. At sixteen years old, on a blind date, he met his future wife, Hope. They were married at nineteen years old and had two children, Daniel and Deborah. The two recently celebrated six decades of marriage just last November, with a big party that included family, friends, and Mike's favorite, an In-N-Out truck. Mike was a dedicated husband, father, and very proud Papa. He was not only dedicated to his family, but to his clients. As an insurance agent and one of the best in the industry, he fielded calls at any time of the day or night from anyone that needed his help. Later in his career, he entered the field of health insurance and supported seniors with caring compassion to ensure that they had the appropriate plans. He was a diehard Dodger fan and was very involved in his children's sports, frequently serving as manager, and also participating in scouts. He was charming, incredibly funny, and was the man behind many memorable roasts. Mike was also his wife's number one fan. While Hope served as a city commissioner and also as a council member, Mike was right there, right by her side, supporting her and her serving the city. Mike passed away peacefully at his home, surrounded by his loved ones. He is survived by his wife, Hope, his daughter Debbie, and son-in-law, Robert, and their two daughters, Denise and Stacy, his son Danny and his four children, Nicole, Max, Elizabeth, and Ryan, and great-grandchildren Devon and Chloe. Our thoughts and prayers are with Hope and our entire family during this trying time, and, uh, I know we will see each other soon. Uh, I would ask for just one moment of silence in honor of Mike. Thank you, Al. That takes us to community matters. Six A, I'll take a number and title, please.
Mayor, this is Aram Chapayan, we are going to, um, proceed with the presentation update on COVID nineteen, and then we'll go back to the community matters, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. With that, I turn over to the city manager, Jackson.
Mayor and council and community, I'm going to mention how proud I am of the organization's efforts to respond to the COVID crisis. Uh, as I mentioned last week, this is on top of a second situation that we faced just prior to the emergency involving our, our cyber systems and our info systems. Our organization has stepped up to the bat, they've done a major change in many ways how they do business, but they continue to meet the priorities of the community in pro- providing the services best they can. What we walked through tonight is the current status of the city and the efforts that we've had in hand, and then I come back to you, Aram.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. The next, uh, several slides, uh, providing the overview of the executive orders the city manager has authorized since March fourth, when initially the L.A. County Department of Health declared local emergency. The, these are recap, uh, for the record, uh, all the various executive orders, and they are later on in the city council, uh, agenda item, uh, ninety. This is just a recap for mayor and council. With that, I will now turn over to, uh, our fire chief, Martha Serna, for his, uh, update. Chief Serna.
Thank you, Aram. Good evening, Mayor, council, this is Martha Serna, fire chief. I'm just going to provide you a brief overview of some of the items from our last meeting, last council meeting. Let me get to the next slide. So, just an update on the Torrance Fire Department and some of the items that we've instituted here. Uh, the first item there is station i- station isolation. What we've done is, we recognize that to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen amongst our first responders or firefighters, we decided to implement a plan that isolates fire- firefighters in their assigned stations, so they're not allowed to work at any other stations, uh, during this period of time. I was, I recently, uh, extended that isolation period out to May second. A part of that isolation period also included canceling of our vacations, trades, and comp days. This was to ensure that we were able to have the maximum amount of first responders, firefighters, paramedics, and, uh, available to the community as we anticipate the peak to happen in the next couple of weeks. We also, during this period, established two community ambulance services or, or units. Uh, these are staffed with our fire recruits. This is an opportunity for us to provide a higher level of service to our community. They also have the ability and have been trained up to test our first responders for COVID nineteen under the direction of our medical director, Dr. Cohen. Recently, this past Monday, finalized a regional dashboard, which gives us an opportunity to overlook or provide an overview of what's going on across the region. The dashboard gives us an opportunity to look at the capacity of our local hospitals, not only here in Torrance, but across the entire L.A. basin, to really gauge the strain being placed on all the medical, um, services across the board, across our region. It also gives us an opportunity to work in conjunction and look at best practices with our local fire agencies, not only here in Los Angeles, but surrounding counties. Recently, as of just yesterday, completed a citywide video, and the video highlights and over- provides an overview of the COVID nineteen, gives a little bit of more detailed information as to what the virus is and the dangers of the virus. It also provides some educational opportunities for employees on the use of masks or facial coverings. And then finally, we are working with the Los Angeles County, uh, Fire Department in exploring opportunities for establishing a community testing site here in Torrance. Next slide. As I shared at our previous council meeting, this is our dashboard, our community dashboard that here focus, that focuses here locally on Torrance. This screenshot was taken today at five P M., and it just, again, provides us an opportunity to kind of gauge where the COVID nineteen impacts, uh, are and what it looks like. Uh, well, this, just to show you how quickly this is changing, uh, this screenshot was just taken two hours ago, since then, we've had an increase in, um, deaths in California by twenty-two, as noted right there in Los Angeles County, and overall cases have exceeded, uh, are close to seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-nine. Also a part of this, uh, dashboard, we have a citywide survey, and it gives us as a, as a leadership group, uh, management group, kind of gauge the pulse of the community and determine what sort of messaging and other opportunities we have, and I believe Aram will touch on some of those, uh, programs that we've instituted based on some of the community feedback. Next slide. As we look forward, um, one, uh, one month outlook, we really truly want to encourage the community to stay at home. We keep hearing the flatten the curve, we've seen some positive, and it's been reported by not only the federal government but other, um, dashboards and, and our state... dashboards and our state officials as well as our local officials, we're starting to see just a small trend downwards in the effectiveness of the stay-home orders that have been instituted across our state. We strongly encourage social distancing. As a city, we are ensuring that we have essential operations. We continue our public outreach, which will be shared lately, which will be shared later in this presentation. We also want to continue, we've established a business support and education task force. There's a lot of opportunities for small businesses, and one of the items that we really are starting to focus in on is the part of recovery. We recognize the impact this will have on our economy, but we want to make sure that we have the tools available and education available for our businesses. We continue to look for opportunities to support our seniors and special needs community or at-risk community. Next slide. We're always looking for best practices regarding employee health and safety. We're adjusting our operations on a daily basis to ensure readiness for all our first responders. We're exploring, as I mentioned earlier, operating a drive-up testing for COVID-19 for our senior community over the age of 65. Closely monitoring our personal protective equipment for the supply, not only for our first responders, but for our, for a lot of cities. Continuing to maintain constant communication with our local hospitals. They now are part of our ELC and provide daily checks every day at 10 o'clock. And as I mentioned, our goal now is to look at recovery operations to ensure that we can get back to as close to normal business as possible. At this point, I believe I'll be turning it over to our ELC director, Adam Chapayan. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Serna. And if we have questions, it'll be appropriate to discuss them on the item 9D later on in the agenda. This is just a weekly briefing update to the council and the community. Adam Chapayan, Assistant City Manager. I am also the ELC Director for the COVID-19 operation. As mentioned before, our incident management is focused on several goals, including life safety, destabilization, property and quality of life, and since we started the management of COVID-19, we've added agility, and the most recent is recovery. While we're managing the incident and meeting the needs of our community, we also want to prepare for eventuality when we resume operations. The ELC operations is, we're in the Level 2, which is seven days a week operation. We have a Monday through Friday coverage as well as weekend shift. We are providing daily department head meetings. We have a council briefing Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The ELC meetings are utilizing telephone conference, and they include local hospitals TUSD, and we're reaching out to areas, private schools, and other learning institutions. The sections initially were management, operations, law, planning, finance, recovery, logistics. We have expanded to include hospitals, schools, care and shelter, employee relations, economic development, and business support. We want to make sure we're a conduit to our business community to share them various resources and support the city can provide in their recovery efforts. With that, a couple of sites that we recommend the public to visit for additional information include L.A. County Department of Health. They have a dedicated website.
Committee met this afternoon and was presented the design efforts by the Torrance Rose Boat Association for the 2021 Tournament of Roses. It was through a teleconference with the committee members Grippets, Matucci, as well as Chairman Goodrich. Also available was the Torrance Rose Boat Association President, Ben Finley, and then members of the public. I don't know, Councilman Goodrich, did you want to present this report, or did you want me to follow through?
I can pick it up from there. Thank you, John.
Okay.
Well, during the course of our meeting, we discovered that this year's parade theme is Dream, Believe, Achieve, and the winning entry presented by Melanie Perez. She's a student at Torrance High School. She's quite the artist as well, I should say. Her float design is called "The Embodiment of Nature," and it depicts endangered animals, including those we may be familiar with, such as the African elephant, and those we are less familiar with, such as the black-footed ferret. Mr. Tim Estes, President of Fiesta Parade Floats, was very enthusiastic about this design because of its unique interpretation of the theme. Mr. Estes and his team will use this drawing as a basis for a more detailed and polished look design. The city council has already allocated $125,000 in the 2020-2021 fiscal year budget for the float, and the Rose Boat Association contributes $25,000. Mr. Estes, for the fourth year in a row, has committed to holding the price to $150,000. Thank you for that. During this afternoon's meeting, the committee concurred with staff's recommendation and approved the conceptual design as the city's float entry into the Pasadena Tournament of Roses Parade on January 1st, 2021. The committee is now making a recommendation to the full city council tonight to approve this selection as well. And if approved, staff will return in early June, asking for approval to enter into a contract with Fiesta Parade Floats as of July 1st, 2021. Thank you. Is there, are there any questions from council? Being done, I'll take a motion to approve the conceptual design for the 2021 float.
Councilman Chen moves to approve the conceptual design for the 2021 rose float.
Second, Councilman Herring.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Grippets.
Yes.
Councilmember Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Fury.
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item 9C from the city attorney's office. To adopt an ordinance amending Torrance Municipal Code Sections 11.7.020 and 11.7.030 regarding city council meetings and adopt a resolution that amends the city council rules of order. From our attorney.
Yes, Your Honor, Patrick Sullivan, city attorney. This is an item to bring back the council rules of order to do some cleanup and housekeeping as well as to address the state of emergency, social distancing, and electronic meetings that we have now been operating under. As you know, the governor had issued his stay-at-home order on the 19th, and the County of Los Angeles filed their safer-at-home order on the 19th, but then was later modified on the 21st, and that's the applicable order currently. The governor, as you stated earlier in the meeting, had issued an order N-25-20 on March 13th that modified the Brown Act to allow for meetings via teleconference, to make them accessible to all members of the public seeking to attend and to address the legislative body to promote social distancing. So these amendments to the ordinance and the resolution, which has the actual rules, accomplish those goals of both cleanup of some housekeeping issues that we've had in the past, as well as to update the rules to deal with the world that we're operating in today. I'm available for any questions. Oh, and actually, one more thing. There is a typographical error in 7.5 subsection 3. The word "apparent" there should read "the party who has the burden of proof," as it does in subsection 1. But other than that, there are no other changes.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Are there any questions from the council? I see none, so I will ask for a motion to concur with the staff's recommendation.
Mayor, do we have any members of the public on this item?
No, there are no members of the public that I called in.
Thank you, just to make you sure, thanks.
You did that earlier.
This is Katie Wong. That's correct. There's still no callers from the public online.
I need a motion to concur.
And if we can make that as amended for section 7.5.
Move to concur as amended. Councilman Herring. Councilman Chen.
Second. They have a tie there, but I think Councilmember Grippets was the first one in. He's the second.
Thank you, Mayor. Roll call vote, Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Grippets.
Yes.
Councilmember Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Fury.
Yes.
That motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. May we have the number and title, please?
Yes, Your Honor, the first is ordinance number 3867. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Torrance, California, amending Torrance Municipal Code Sections 11.7.020 and 11.7.030 regarding city council meetings.
Move for the adoption ordinance number 3867.
Councilmember Chen, second.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Grippets.
Yes.
Councilmember Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Fury.
Yes.
Your Honor, that carried unanimously.
Thank you. May we have the next number and title, please?
Yes, Your Honor, this is revolution number 2020-18. A revolution of the city council of the city of Torrance, California, adopting amended city council rules of order as city policy number 2 as set forth in Torrance Municipal Code Section 11.7.010.
Move for the adoption of resolution number 2020-18.
Councilmember Chen, second.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Grippets.
Yes.
Councilmember Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Yes.
Mayor Fury.
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item 9D from the city manager and the city attorney. That will include the summary publication. That's the way I heard it.
Yeah, they did, they did concur with the recommendation of recovery.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leroy.
Thanks for watching us. Next item on the agenda is item 9D from the city manager and the city attorney, ratification and extension of the public orders from staff.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is Leroy Jackson, city manager. Tonight, I'm requesting the city council to ratify and extend the public orders on COVID-19 emergency. Emergency has required the city to take a series of actions which have addressed levels of service, closing public counters, canceling public events, canceling public meetings, suspending street sweeping, reducing services, our transit services. We've taken these steps in order to maintain as much service as we can. We reached out and utilized our personnel to help our housebound citizens with food service deliveries. We've worked with the L.A. County Department of Public Health to allow the reopening of our farmers' markets. Our fire department's restructured its staffing to increase its emergency response to medical emergency. Both police and fire have taken proactive steps to reserve their availability and to minimize the risks taken to their employees. We have quarantined employees under current guidelines and made them unavailable to first service to allow for the incubation period to pass. Most employees have tested negative and returned to work. Our office personnel, field crews, transit personnel, continue to seek ways to preserve service to our citizens. Our library personnel, while unable to service patrons inside the library, have utilized the internet to provide educational programming for our community via social media platforms. Orchesters to engage our youth and students is very much appreciated. Many of our personnel are working from home and meeting as you are through telecommunications. I believe the orders before you tonight are consistent with your intentions. However, if not, this process offers the council an opportunity to review, discuss, and if you feel necessary, modify or set aside these orders or actions. The fire chief and my staff and both departments are available for questions and to assist you in your deliberation. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Are there any questions from the council?
Councilman Grippets?
Go ahead.
May I speak? Councilman Grippets? Yep.
I thought I acknowledged you. Go ahead.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. My comment is really not directed at any of the resolutions in particular, but I did let a member of the public reach out to me and ask me about the voluntary requirement of wearing masks, and their comment was, why aren't food preparers required to wear masks? And is that something that has been discussed at any level of government to your knowledge?
There are some cities who have discussed it and explored it. It's an option that's available. We've not felt necessary to reach out to make that order at this stage. The council can choose to make that order, though.
I'd be interested to hear what my colleagues feel about food preparers wearing, required to wear masks.
Anybody else wish to be heard?
This is Councilmember Goodrich. I could, I could go for that.
This is Councilman Chen.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilmember Chen.
Yeah, I feel there are a lot of food preparers who are already voluntarily putting protective masks on of various types, i.e., if we need to make an enforcement of them doing it. This is how I feel at this moment.
I kind of agree with you, Councilmember. One of our neighboring cities has just voted today to make it mandatory for all people when in public to be wearing masks, and I would certainly hope I wear my mask when I'm out in public, and I certainly, I know my colleagues are doing the same thing. I think maybe sometimes if we lead by example, perhaps people will take us up on it. Certainly, the news media is getting that information out to people, and we're going to be coming back in a week, and Councilmember Grippets, I think we should be looking at this and see how it rolls out this week and take action, maybe even stronger than what you're, what you were talking about, just the food service, because this is a really important thing, but people have to know not to use the N95 mask. That's the ones that are reserved for first responders and medical professionals, even the surgical mask, but the recommendation that we're getting for people who are just out and about is just to have something covering your mouth so that you protect yourself and protect the rest of the community. So I think I'd like to see, perhaps, we come back next week and discuss this. Anybody else?
Well, but why don't we make the recommendation that we'll bring it back as an agenda item for an actual vote, as a separate agenda item, if my colleagues would concur? Because I think that preparing food, when you order food to take out or something like that, I think we'd all like to have the confidence to know that it was made in a proper environment. If someone doesn't wear a mask and has the potential, if they're sick and those microbes come out of their mouths and they land in the food, that food will allow that virus to live for some period of time, and then expecting public to heat that food then may be at risk. So I think it's something we should consider.
Mayor, this is the city attorney, Patrick Sullivan. If I may, another action might be also for Councilman Grippets, is you may want to direct staff of the city manager to look into... is you may want to direct staff of the city manager to look into various things along that continuum, whether it's facial coverings for food service workers or facial coverings for everyone out in public. One of the things we also would have to define, which would probably make it difficult to do tonight, is what do we mean by a mask or a facial covering, since there are shortages? And so that's something that we could, or council could, direct the city manager to look into and possibly explore either for an item to bring back or for him to issue an order for council then to come back and ratify later.
Councilmember Griffith, how's that sound?
That sounds fine. It's not my intent to impose on the public as a requirement just for food servers or food preparers. And I think that that's an area where people need to have confidence that they're getting food that has been prepared in the best possible way to prevent any transmission of illness.
Mayor, someone in the area agrees. This is Leroy Jackson again. We certainly can go out and communicate that through our food serving areas and grocery stores and encourage them towards that direction. And if necessary, order if matters become more critical during the week. Or to return with this next week for your consideration.
Mayor? Have the wait for me. Thank you.
Councilman Rizzo here.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Rizzo.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're going to have staff take a look at it. I'd also ask staff to circle back with LA County Health Department and see what their input is on that. You know, as I've been out and about my daily foraging expeditions, that I have noticed that many of the grocery store workers, they are wearing masks, they're wearing gloves, they're maintaining the six feet, they're sanitizing. So we're seeing a lot of voluntary compliance with this. I don't want to try and get to the point where we're actually starting to mandate and trying to get in any type of enforcement actions on this. But I do think we need to circle back with LA County Health. If that's something that is agreeable for them, that might be an order that they would want to issue in reference to food servers. So, just my comments on it.
Thank you. Councilman Matucci, did you have some comment?
Yes, Mayor. Because time is of the essence and something like this, I would probably recommend that we can add it to tonight's resolution. I don't know if that's even feasible. But I think food service, I think, should be covering their mouths with some sort of mask contraption. Doesn't have to be anything special. But I think most people are. But I have picked up food at places that aren't doing it. And quite honestly, I think if we wait till next week, you know, this is something that we probably should take action tonight if even legally possible. Thank you.
This is, again, Patrick Sullivan, the city attorney. The only issue with taking issue tonight, I mean, taking action tonight is the council's action is ratifying the previous order or orders issued by Leroy Jackson, the city manager as the director of emergency services. And so I'm not sure, since it's just a ratification, if that would be within the Brown Act on that issue. But like I said, another option would be to give direction to the city manager to look into either bringing it back to council for next week or looking into what other agencies and other health departments here in LA County and throughout the state have done. And possibly he could then determine to issue his own order, which also could be brought back to you next week as well. So either or would be the option there of either bringing back that item for you for next week or having him look into possibly issuing an order on food workers himself that can be brought back to you for ratification.
Yes, Councilmember Griffiths again.
If you'd like to go ahead.
Mayor? Well, I just, what the city attorney said was fine. I think obviously the city manager has the capacity to make that order at any time. And with Councilmember Matucci, I think time is of the essence in this regard. And I think we'd all like the knowledge and comfort to know that our food servers have been required to wear masks in the preparation of the food that we eat. And I think they're perfectly safe here tonight. So if the city manager would like to make that order at the recommendation of council, I know it's not real for change because it's particularly general, but it's on topic. That would be a perfectly acceptable solution as opposed to waiting for a full week.
And that is within the powers of the city manager. So, Mr. Jackson, you've heard council. And we'll expect to talk about this again next week and see what occurs. And in the interim, as Councilmember Rizzo pointed out, we will check with public health. The discussions I've heard from the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health seem like they may be going to mandatory mask out and about. So it may be something that may be moved by next Tuesday.
We can start right quickly on that. And I can attest to what the council has said and they will be a laugher.
Thank you, Patrick. We all appreciate that. Any other questions, Congress? Has anybody called into the call center on item ninety, Congressman David?
Mayor, this is Katie Wong. I do not see any callers on the line.
Okay. Having a long discussion by the council and nobody from the public wishing to call in on this, I'll take the motion to the control of the staff recommendation and approve the order in summary for publication.
Actually, these are ratifying, resolutions ratifying the public orders and administrative orders.
This is Katie Wong. I'm sorry for interrupting, Mayor. I understand that we do have a caller that is currently being transferred. If you don't mind holding for a moment, please?
No, we can go.
Thank you, Mayor. I will ask the caller in as soon as she becomes available. Connie Jackson, you are on the line for item ninety. Can you please start speaking?
I wanted to talk about the mask. Okay, maybe that's me.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead, ma'am. We're waiting.
Oh, okay. Um, I just wanted to comment on that they're talking about at the moment. I don't think it should go till next week. I think the need is right now as we're attaching the urge, the... Because of how... Oh, I love this. I can't hear. Okay. If people are going out and about, which they shouldn't be, even if they just pull their shirt up over their mouth and nose, at least they're covered. If you want to call it a mask, that's fine. If you want to just call it a covering, but I think they all should do that. Even if they don't want to make it viable tonight, at least the city manager should give a temporary, I think, if he can. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I think we all agree with you, and I certainly agree with you. I do that, and I'm certain you do as well. And we'll give direction to the city manager to act on it without coming back to us in advance. So he has the power to do that if it's deemed necessary. But we'll be checking with the Department of Public Health of Los Angeles County to see what their thoughts are on this as well. The question there was brought by Councilmember Griffiths was for food servers and food preparers, not basically everybody out in the community. So we'll look at all of the aspects of masking as well as face coverings as opposed to masking. Okay?
Okey-dokey. Well, I'm sure it will eventually work.
Thank you very much for your input. We appreciate you calling in.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, caller. I am just connecting that caller now, Mayor. And I do not see anyone else on the line at this end.
Okay. And we said that we're looking for the... To adopt... Ratification and extension of the public orders.
This is Councilman Chen. I move to concur to ratification and extension of public orders.
Councilmember Griffith second.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffith?
Yes.
Councilmember Herring?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
And now we have a series of resolutions. I seem to recall that we could do all five of these with one motion. Is that correct?
That is correct, Your Honor. Since the vote was unanimous, there would be no problem in doing them collectively. The clerk just needs to read the titles.
Yes, she does. And I just wanted to ask her, could you give us the numbers and titles of these five resolutions?
Yes, Your Honor. The first is resolution twenty twenty dash nineteen. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, ratifying public order number twenty twenty dash two prohibiting street fairs, swap parties, parades, community runs, and cycling events, closing swap meets, and all the local fashion center stores that are solely accessed from within the internal corridors of the mall with the exception of certain food and beverage vendors and/or facilities. The second resolution is resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, ratifying public order number twenty twenty dash three regarding social distancing and safety protective measures for all essential businesses. The third resolution is resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-one. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, ratifying public order number twenty twenty dash four suspending timelines in sections eleven point five point three and eleven point five point four of the Torrance Municipal Code relating to hearings on appeal, suspending timelines in sections ninety-two point forty-one point zero nine zero, ninety-two point forty-one point one hundred, ninety-two point forty-one point one one zero, and ninety-two point forty-one point one two zero relating to view equity and suspending all public hearings during the state of emergency related to COVID-19. The next resolution is resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, ratifying public order number twenty twenty dash five closing Torrance Beach, Torrance Beach parking lot, the portion of the strand within the City of Torrance's jurisdiction, Merrimore Park, and Riviera Beach Colony parking lot. And the last resolution, the last resolution, Your Honor, is resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-three. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, ratifying administrative orders issued by the city manager acting as the director of emergency services between March twelfth, twenty twenty and March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
This is Councilman Chen. I move to adopt resolutions twenty twenty dash nineteen through twenty twenty dash twenty-three.
Councilmember Goodrich, second.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffith?
Yes.
Councilmember Herring?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, well, let's go down ten, is hearings. They're non-scheduled. Number eleven, agency agenda, they're non-scheduled. Number twelve is their second meeting ordinance. They're non-scheduled. Which takes us to number fourteen, which is oral communication. Oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, city council cannot act on items raised assuming public comment, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. Request clarification or refer the item to staff. Figures under oral communication will have no longer than three minutes per speaker. Do we have any members of the public who have called in for public comment? I'll just go there. We did receive... We did receive four email communications for oral communications, and they have been provided to all of the members of the council, and they are part of the record for this evening. Now, back to the call center.
Hi, Mayor. This is Katie Wong. At the current moment, I believe that the calls are being transferred in. If you don't mind holding for a moment, please?
We're waiting.
Great, thank you. Caller, Margaret O'Regan, if you can please start speaking, your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. I would like to thank the Torrance City Council, the city manager, all the city employees, including fire and police, for guiding us through this Alfred Hitchcock-type pandemic and for dealing with the computer technical problems we're having. And also the cooperation of the citizens. Torrance has been doing the best they can through those unusual circumstances. I have one suggestion. Since we're all stuck at home, could the Torrance City Cable, please, put on half-hour little easy walk videos? So it doesn't matter if you're a senior citizen like me or a kid home from school. For one half hour, we can do a Leslie Sandstorm or something walking exercise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Is there anybody else?
Yes, Mayor. Caller Debbie Hayes, you are now unmuted.
Hello, this is Debbie Hayes. And I just wanted to thank everyone in the city who is doing a fabulous, fabulous, fabulous job to lead us through uncharted waters. You step up to every challenge like you've done it before, especially at the farmer's market. Oh, my gosh. But every one of you has carried a burden that's unbelievable. And you... Hello, this is Debbie Hayes. And I just wanted to thank every single one of you for stepping up to the plate during these challenging times. The entire city is doing an absolutely fabulous job of rocking... Of rocking this situation. And I also wanted to thank the first responders out there. I'm talking police, fire, UPS workers, grocery store employees, hospital heroes, et cetera. And I'm sorry, I think I'm repeating myself because this is kind of a new situation. But keep up the good work and know that we've got your back out here. And my motto of this month is... And my motto of this month is better six feet apart than six feet under. So let's hashtag stay at home.
Thank you, Debbie. We appreciate the kind words and all your efforts as well. Anything else?
Mayor, this is Katie Wong. At this time, I do not see any callers on the line.
Okay. If there's no other callers, then we'll bring it up to the city council. And, uh, the order that I have is, uh, Councilmember Rizzo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just again, uh, to reiterate, uh, from the last caller, uh, everybody, you know, stay home. Uh, remain calm. Uh, we're gonna get this, through this together as a community. And, uh, like our little motto, I think that's kinda neat. Better than, better to be six feet apart than six feet under. Um, those are, those are pretty good words to put here, too. Um, so, uh, as, as anybody can, uh, you know, wear your mask. I've, I've got my mask right here, and I'll be wearing this as soon as I, uh, finish up and leave the room. So, uh, again, stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Chen?
Thank you, mayor. I too want to encourage our residents to continue with COVID- nineteen. Best practices, stay safe, and to remember the good hygiene practices we're learning now, so that when this is over, we continue to practice good personal hygiene. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodrich?
Yes, I'd just like to, uh, thank staff for the extra hours they're putting in. And, uh, the CARES2Go program is, uh, really proven to be, uh, a success, and I, I know the residents appreciate it. And, uh, finally, especially the staff at the farmer's market. If, uh, our management staff could pass on my personal thanks to the frontline staff that are working that. Pretty impressive that some, uh, heavy hitters like Santa Monica and LA, they had to come to see how it's done down here in Torrance, because, uh, we're, we're a model for the rest of the cities, and we're doing it right, right off the bat, and providing a vital service to residents and taking some burden off of, uh, the grocery stores and so they seem to have line. So, um, fantastic job on that. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Griffiths?
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to just take a moment to, uh, say that my heart goes out to everyone who's had any difficulties through this process, whether it's financial or, uh, health-wise. I, I know certainly financial, those were my huge burden to many, many people, businesses, and personal issues. There are many resources available to businesses and to, um, individuals to help you recover financially. And I hope you will take advantage of the many resources that are available on our, uh, website, torranceca.com, uh, through the federal government and state and local governments that have also, uh, prepared many different, uh, packages to assist with, uh, people's, uh, financial needs. Uh, so please reach out to those. But in that same spirit, we also have to be looking at the damage that this is causing our city. And with the concurrence of my colleagues, I'd like to have staff prepare an outline, uh, for council's consideration to look at, uh, issues related to, uh, tightening up our budget, potential budget cut, and our hiring freeze of non-offensive personnel, uh, that we should be discussing, uh, sooner rather than later. How do I get concurrence?
Councilman, we can say, this is Leroy Jackson. We are in the process of assessing our financial situation. We will be coming forward to fairly quickly with, with strategies to deal with the shortfall on revenues that we're seeing at the present time, and giving you ideas and structuring going forward for the end of this year, plus, uh, preparation for the budget for next year.
So in other words, it's in the works?
In the works. We'll be coming to, uh, we, we have the same concern. This is not something that sits around. We have to move on it very quickly. We should be bringing it forward to you very shortly.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the council has opportunity to weigh in on that, and I would value to hear my, uh, colleagues' opinions and concerns about, uh, where we are with our budget and the steps that we should be taking to, uh, make sure that we're in the best possible position.
Thank you. Anything else?
Sure, that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Herring?
Uh, thank you, mayor. I too would like to, uh, commend, um, uh, city manager Leroy Jackson for his flip-fold and decisive leadership, uh, in acting on these public orders, uh, to keep our community safe and protected. Um, early on, out the gate, uh, I know in February, uh, he was making some real hard, tough, uh, decisions, uh, and, um, and, and it has served us well. So I want to, uh, commend, uh, city manager for, for his leadership. Uh, and just thank our, our staff, uh, I mean, our staff is, um, um, some elite professionals, um, uh, that has, uh, that, uh, old army get-it-done attitude, uh, mindset. Um, been working very hard, um, day in and day out, uh, round the clock, uh, for our city. And I know that we always talk about our first responders, and I do thank our fire department, our police, uh, for it. But also, uh, those that are working in community service, um, uh, out in the public, um, uh, sector, uh, a housekeeping engineer that's keeping us clean and safe, uh, people that's behind the scenes that you don't see. Um, just want to really say, say thank you. Thank you, thank you to, to all, all of our staff. And, and that's been said, uh, to our community for, for responding. Um, like what Debbie Hayes says, it's better to be, uh, uh, six feet apart than, than six feet under. I think that, that's, that's a very good saying. Uh, and then lastly, uh, the, uh, the Torrance CARES2Go grocery delivery program. I think that is an excellent way of serving our community and keeping our employees engaged. And, uh, from what I'm hearing, you're doing a fantastic job. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Matucci?
Thank you, mayor. I too want to congratulate, uh, really just staff for bringing this, uh, meeting together. It looks like we're almost getting the hang of it. Um, I'd like to, uh, also concur with, uh, Griffiths', uh, con- concerns, uh, about, you know, budget shortfalls and what we might be experiencing in the near future. Uh, I really do think, uh, some of the hardest hits we may get probably within the next, uh, three to six months, uh, at least financially. But, uh, we do need to take a proactive approach, looking into what we need to do to really, not just stay afloat, but, uh, to be responsible, uh, fiscally. Uh, I think there's gonna be a, a lot of hard decisions we may have to make in the near future. And, uh, I just hope that we, uh, jump on it sooner than later instead of scrambling around, uh, later on, so... But, uh, anyways, uh, thanks again to, for, really just for everyone involved, uh, here at City Hall and, and all the employees that I see working out on, out on the streets and stuff. I mean, it's, it's really amazing how even during these, uh, these hard times, we still are able to run the city, uh, properly, or at least, you know, functional. So, anyway, that's all I got. God bless you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, uh, I agree with everybody. Uh, there's probably some hard decisions made in the next two, three, four, six months, maybe a year from now. Uh, it's what we have incurred with, uh, uh, the, uh, coronavirus and what it's brought to us economically and, and actually health-wise to some members of our community. Uh, everybody's asked to put a mask on when they're out and about. Uh, you know, how many times do you have to tell somebody to do it? Uh, uh, but now we're seeing much more compliance, more people are doing it, and, uh, that makes everybody that much safer. And as I mentioned at the outset, uh, everybody's talking about, uh, straightening out the, the curve. And, uh, you know, if, if our city has any indication of it, of our residents and our businesses, or any indication of the cooperation throughout the state of California, then, uh, I, you know, I think we're in a, as best a situation as we possibly could be at this point in time. Uh, it was brought up to me today, a, a young lady, uh, sent me, uh, an email, and, uh, one of those things is that, you know, ironically, we have less traffic now. And that's always been one of our biggest complaints from our, our public, is traffic is really bad. Now we have less traffic, and unfortunately, that has caused people to be, to be speeding and actually driving erratically. We've had some really colossal, uh, traffic collisions in the last few weeks, uh, based upon, I guess, that, uh, people are just thinking they get places a lot faster. So, I would ask everybody, just, you know, take your time getting where you're going. Uh, without the traffic there, you could still drive safely, you don't have to drive rapidly. So as we close the night's agenda, I want to thank our citizens for all you are doing and, and your perseverance. Please help us to assist those in our community who need our help during these difficult times. Our seniors, our businesses, our restaurants. Hospitals are amongst many groups that need our help. Please order from our local restaurants for the takeout and delivery. This will help them greatly to survive and continue to serve our community after this emergency is over. As I've stated before, there are no shortages in our food and supplies, so please, only shop if necessary, but reasonably, too. Hoarding is actually counterproductive and hurts individuals in need for essential supplies. Please wear a face covering when in public. Keep social distancing. And it's not limited to six foot. You can go eight foot or ten foot or twelve foot away from people. The, the, the further the better, actually. And stay indoors as much as possible. Lay a hole in the distance when you're, you greet your neighbors. And rejoice in the resilience of who we are. Be safe and take care. And the last one I want to say is that happy birthday to my son. It was his fourth birthday today, and Terry and I took a ride out there to see he and his four children and his wife, and we celebrated his birthday from about twelve foot away. And, and it hurt really hard that we couldn't hug our grandchildren. We couldn't hug and kiss our, our son or his wife, but we did, because that's what we have to do right now. And I encourage everybody to just really reflect on how important it is. Someone told me that in the Greatest Generation, we, uh, took all of our young men and sent them off to war, continents far away, and they risked their lives. And now we're being asked to stay home. Turn on your television, watch your Netflix. Uh, you know, when you think about everything all together, uh, it's really not as bad as it could be. And if we all cooperate, it will not be as bad as it could be. And that's the most important thing. God bless you all. Mr. Jackson, anything from city staff?
No, Your Honor. Again, an appreciation to the council for working with us for this meeting. Thank you to the citizens for understanding the difficulties we're having in conducting meetings in this way and this process. Thank you so much to our local staff, the info systems, and the others for working, put this on as we have this time. And as mentioned, this is a working process. Hopefully next Tuesday will help be even better than we are today. And hopefully we won't have to be better at this whole, uh, period of time.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you to our entire staff and every employee that works for the City of Torrance, and all the residents, and all the businesses, and all those people who, uh, are employees here. Uh, we understand that it's difficult, and it's difficult for absolutely everybody. But the better we all cooperate, the sooner we'll be through this. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I move to adjourn, uh, following the recommendation of the city manager. That City Council adjourned tonight's City Council meeting to Tuesday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty, for the regular meeting commencing at seven PM. In compliance with Governor Newsom's executive order N twenty-nine twenty, which suspended portions of the Brown Act. Members of the Torrance City Council and staff will, need to learn how to put a period in a sentence here. Members of the Torrance City Council and staff will participate in this meeting electronically and via telephone in our continuing effort to practice social distancing to reduce the spread of COVID- nineteen. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via City Cable Channel Three Spectrum and Channel Thirty-One Frontier. Over the air on twenty-five point two, streaming on torranceca.gov, Facebook at Torrance CA, and Instagram Live at City of Torrance CA.
Councilmember Griffiths, second, as amended.
Will call vote, Councilmember Chen. Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths.
Yes.
Councilmember Herring.
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Yes.
And Mayor Fury.
Yes.
Your honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. We'll see you next week.